Hi Rolando and David, everybody okay here?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, we're waiting for the visitors or whatever to come in, uh go ahead and get your presentation ready Rolando, do you have it?
Oh, I think he's waiting in the lobby, you want me to let him in?
Yeah, yeah, let him in for me and I'm gonna bounce around and make sure all the other rooms are okay, make sure tell him go ahead and get his presentation up, hey Rolando.
Hey, how's it going?
I'm doing well, please get your presentation up and get it started so when people come we'll be ready to go and um I'm bouncing around, I'll come back, do you need anything right now guys?
No, so I I do see there's one gentleman in the waiting lobby, do we wait for that until we're set?
Let him in, let him in.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, I'll be back.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Share. No. Let me make sure. So I have the PowerPoint open David, I'm gonna go to share.
Okay.
Um. I guess it's doing whole screen but so I'll split. And just for the record, I've got Ms. Sherry Linville, she is, she she couldn't log in through this portal so I'm having her um view it through Zoom like on my screen.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to connect with her right before this meeting, I was gonna go to her place.
So she's looking at us right now?
Uh huh, so she's.
Hi Ms. Linville.
I don't know. So I'll try to help if she has any questions or things to add, um. So I got. Can you, can you see that screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there, is there any way you can make it full screen or?
Oh, uh let me see, I guess it's not in play mode, are you seeing the full screen or are you seeing like the present?
Seeing, uh I'm seeing two um.
Okay, try.
There you go, perfect.
Bingo, very cool. So I was telling Sherry, uh I, it, this is like a table at an open house, uh somebody could walk by, maybe nobody will. Say we have one other guest?
Well, I saw them but I guess they um, they're no longer here, I was gonna let them in but yeah, we we can you know, wait a little bit longer and then I know Mrs. Burnside, Sharon, so she was gonna come back so I guess once she comes back we can begin and.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
But yeah, I don't see anyone in queue right now currently.
I wasn't sure, I was like, well, if we hang out for the hour or if you guys tell us, we're gonna go ahead and close at next time but.
Yeah.
I'm prepared.
No, like I said, we we appreciate you because this is definitely something that, you know, we we um we wanna help y'all and this is a, you know, something if we are able to get this through, this could be a, an essential tool that can allow us a lot more tools.
Absolutely, and yeah, just kind of like getting my talking points together, it's a, it's relatively simple because we are not proposing any physical changes at this point, um this is just like reclassification so that we can do stuff in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
That, maybe the only question I actually had that may, maybe somebody would ask me or I was curious myself, if we do get this classification, does that require the city to like make some kind of weird change that we're not aware of, like, oh, now that you're a minor collector, your sidewalk has to be I just, that's just something I thought about but.
No, not too sure, but we could definitely, we could definitely include that as one of the questions, that's actually, that's actually a really good question, we could definitely um get that over to planning just for uh for them to review that, but per my knowledge, I don't think so.
Yeah, they're saying, now Metro won't, can't go through that street now, they have to turn, you know.
Yeah.
Said nothing that I know of, nothing will change outside of the classification first. If it gets approved, so yeah, I've got the, the information that I have for anyone. Um and then the meeting on the twenty seventh, that's more of like public comments, uh people are like yay or nay or um is that correct?
I believe so, let me see if I can pull it up.
At first I was thinking that was kind of like tonight, but I think tonight is more just information, like just questions or, or any general concerns, um.
Yeah, I, I think today is just you presenting it. You know, if anyone does pop up and, you know, we can, we can, we can let them know, you know, what are we trying to do, what's the reasoning behind it? And you know, if they have any questions, you know, feel free to send it over to the planning department for their team to review.
Very good, very good. Yeah, I found some pictures before and after.
Yeah, I saw those.
I know, I had asked about the high injury network numbers, which they're not in or they're not available just yet, but um um it's still, this is an interesting data point, you know, we still are in that classification.
Yeah. Wait for two seconds, I'll be back in two seconds.
Okay. So this kind of works for you Sherry?
I'm listening, yes.
It kind of works for you, good.
So, so I'm thinking that the meeting uh next month is uh should be, I mean, I know it's gonna be virtual, but it's also in person.
Yes, mm-hmm, so that's a little bit more like if, if people are, they really want to give their personal testimony and support or maybe they don't support it, you know, that's when.
Yeah, I, I think we should go to that in person, you and I.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah, that would be a nice one to go to.
Yes, I think we should go, you should drive us.
Mm-hmm.
Down there and we should go in person so that we can give our testimonies about the wrecks and crashes and everything that have been occurring on Wilcrest for many, 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 many years.
Mm-hmm, I know, you have a lot of history.
Yeah, I don't think that we should do that virtually, I think we should go in person and uh, you know, let them have it.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, yeah, we have a pretty strong case, uh it was interesting, the last meeting uh they were presenting the other recommendations and um though, they're just really uh straightforward, more like business transactional like developers building out an area and trying to re um redesign the street, um so it's a lot of it is logistics based, so ours, I think, is the only one that's kind of like, you know, community based, based on, you know, these problems and issues that we've been having in the past. So yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, it's a little different.
My question, uh since I received information in the mail about the meetings, um I think it, I, as I recall, I think it said, well, you're receiving this because you're a homeowner. So did other people that live on Wilcrest receive this information also?
Yes, I believe.
Answer that for you, if I can help you, I did jump back in for you. Uh thank you for your question, we actually sent out notifications to anybody within fifty feet on either side of the corridor. So if you are, if your home is, you know, is within fifty feet of that corridor on both sides and I think Wilcrest is what, north-south um street, can you go through your uh presentation, just a little bit, let me see the amendment please?
There you go.
Yeah, so it's a north-south, so anybody fifty feet on either side of that would receive a notification of the proposed reclassification of this major thoroughfare.
Hmm, gotcha.
Does that help you?
Have to know how many people that is, do you?
I, actually I do.
Are another people attending this meeting?
Well, the meeting goes from six to seven, so they may, you know, it's an open house, so people can come in at any time that they like. I can look and get an approximate number based upon what we sent off from our um from our Excel file, so if you give me a minute, let me pull that up, okay?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Cause you know Rolando, the more um the more people that live here that have experienced all these crashes, uh you know their voice is very important.
Mm-hmm.
Not just, you know, you and me, but lots of folks.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, so yeah, that twenty-seventh meeting will be pretty important to
Yes.
Get any kind of support, um hear their stories.
Right.
Especially um, what's his name, Mike, Mike across the street, I know he had been pretty vocal in the past.
Yeah, there's been several crashes to houses and fences across the street.
Mm-hmm. I know, seems pretty obvious to us, right?
Yeah, exactly, well, that's cause you know, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven. How long have you lived here?
Uh about eight years.
Yeah, so you've experienced, you don't live on Wilcrest, but you've experienced uh the crashes to the pool fences, we've had just two one in September and one in January to the new, brand-new wrought iron fence and then we've had them crashed into the chain link things fence before and we've had, have had, had cra- uh house crashes too.
Mm-hmm, I know.
Lots of those, yeah.
May I jump in here and let you know, we had, we sent these notifications out to approximately three hundred fifteen people along that corridor, homeowners.
Gotcha, it's about three hundred and fifteen.
Ten people?
Three hundred and fif-
Three fifteen, three hundred fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Three hundred and fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
This mail.
There we go.
And again, it is an hour long, people may come in, we still have another thirty minutes for people to come and drop in and sometimes people can't make the meetings, but we get comments.
We might not be able to download the Microsoft Teams because I wasn't able to download it on my brand-new computer. I had to do it through Rolando's link that he sent me.
And then the next thing's in person, right?
That, that's probably why they're not, because they can't get on to the meeting.
Well, if the, if you know anybody, I mean, you're living in the community and you know people want to be a part of it, this is really just the beginning, so if there's anybody that can't get here please have them come to the next meeting, that is an in-person meeting, it is also virtual, so either way that they wanna join that is a public hearing meeting and that one is the most important because this is more inform, you know, kind of like informative for you, but the public hearing is where we really listen to you and hear your voice. If they go to the website, they're, they, we have an online comment form, please have them fill out their concerns and comments. Um we want to hear from your community, so encourage all that are, you know, if they could have made it, wanted to be here, had a heart to be here but couldn't, you know, like they say in church, whatever, just get us your comments and we'll be happy to listen to your voices. Um you can do that many ways, recording it here, you can do it online, you can call us or you can send us an email, we are not leaving anybody out, we're so glad that you came.
Awesome.
Sharon, we, we did have a, a question regarding the um, you know, the um the declassification, would that affect like any like bus routes or you know, the, would that, any requirements for the width of the street, the sidewalk, any issues with the median, nothing like that?
We're gonna start our inter-agency coordination meetings tomorrow and I don't want to address that question prematurely. That is something that we will uh discuss in those inter-agency meetings. I will say that generally, let me just say generally, a reclassification does not necessarily affect bus routes, however, if you're talking about, you know, making changes along that reclassification, it could. So let's just hold off on that and address this issue with Metro and with the people that uh attend the meeting, like Keeson Public Works, and we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that'll be some good information, um cause I told David, as I know right now, like I said, this application is just to change the classification, there's no physical, nothing, it's just a classification, but as far as I'm aware, there's no changes that will be required, um but like you said, you'll be having those conversations.
Yeah, and Rolando, you're right on point, it's, it's simply a reclassification and generally when we do that, it doesn't affect anything. But because this is a special situation and we're trying to do things to make this street a little bit safer, you know, I want to hold off on that and see what proposals uh come from the inter-agency coordination meeting.
I'm your phone, thank you.
Does ma'am, does that answer your question, are you good?
Yes, yes, yes ma'am.
Okay, I'm gonna bounce and go to another room, if I have two amendments. If you guys have something that you can't answer, just let them know, I'll be back and I'll be happy to help.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's um, it's definitely important because um, I'm actually not familiar to see, uh pardon me, I, I don't know the the, the knowledge of, you know, speed cushions and like a metro, you know.
Mm-hmm.
If uh, you know, have you seen a bus, I'm, I'm trying to go back and backtrack, do buses go over speed bumps?
Hmm.
What you're trying to recall.
As far as the routes, the routes?
I bet they don't.
I don't know.
They don't. It's gonna be an issue.
Yeah, yeah, you know, one of my, personally, one of my favorite solutions could be two four-way stop signs at Glenwood and Bexley, I feel when you look at it how it's like evenly spaced and, and the traffic that comes out of those intersections um and sometimes the danger of how, you know, when you're in your car and you're turning and you imagine a four-way stop sign, like it looks like it was built to be like that, but it just never works. Um, yeah, that's, that's one thing, that's one thing that I feel that could assist because by the time you're picking up speed from Bissonet or Beachnut, then you would hit a four-way stop and then there's a little bit more of a stretch and then there's another one, so it's not enough of a stretch to just, you know, speed down, so.
Okay, yeah, like I said, even if, you know, say the uh NTMP for speed cushion was denied, we still have the option of doing that, which you just stated, which would be
Mm-hmm.
Implementing bust up, um stop signs.
But you'll kind of hear it all, which I'm sure you've had in the past, you want stop signs and stoplights and speed bumps, you know, but so we'll get to that point, hopefully we're, we can say, okay, well, what will be a um a good solution here, I know one time, uh Sherry Ann Baker was concerned about any kind of speed deterrent, or may, maybe it was the stop signs or lights, she was a little concerned about congestion or possible traffic, so that's, that's one comment, um.
Well, my other concern about the stop signs is people running them.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I mean, we, we have, we have, you know, drivers who runs stop signs and they run red lights.
Yeah.
So to me, the best solution are the speed bumps, but that may be an issue with Metro.
Hmm.
Yeah.
I wanted to jump in here and, and ask, ma'am, could, I don't know if you, you stated your name for the record, do you have access to the chat? We can type your name for the record, maybe an email address if you wanted us to reach back uh out to you to make sure we could give you information that you may need or you know, state your name, spell your name, all this is going on the record, it is recorded, so we'd like to know and maybe you did it, I apologize if I didn't hear you.
Oh, that was for you Sherry, if you wanted to introduce yourself.
Oh, okay, my name is Sherry Louise Linville. I live at nine zero zero four Wilcrest. And I've lived here since nineteen ninety-seven and have witnessed many, many accidents due to uh speeders on Wilcrest. She won my email too.
Yeah, email would be great, um just so that we have that, if we needed to reach out, you know, to you and please don't forget if you, even after this meeting, if you still wanna make your comment online, we'd love to have it. Just go to our website and, and put your comments, I like what you were saying about that stop sign. All that information matters, but of course we'll take it from here, no need to do the extra step, but it can't hurt.
Okay, my email is sl dot linville, L I N V I L L E at ATT dot net.
Ms. Linville, if you'd like, I can put it in the chat for you, um I have it, is that okay?
Perfect.
Okay.
That'll be great. Thank you David, I'm gonna bounce around and you guys need anything right now?
Very good.
Okay, thank you, I'll be back.
So Mr. Brusella, are you there?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I sent you, this is, doesn't have anything to do with.
Yeah, I, I wanted to call you regarding the, the horse on the sidewalk, um.
Okay, 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 I didn't receive.
Yeah, I wanted, I, I'm still waiting to hear call because that, that's an, I've never especially here in the southwest, you know, in other parts of Houston, sure, we'll, we'll get that, but not here, I'm, I'm, I'm still waiting to get back, that's why I haven't, I haven't uh I didn't wanna call you, that we did get it, what I've been reading, it's um, you know, it's it's classify, i- on the street, sure, you have to abide by certain, you know, like if they were, you know, uh any type of uh bike, they have to abide by the certain you know, if there's a stop sign, they gotta do the stop sign, it's like, like a bike, right? But when it's back on the sidewalk, that's where it's like, I don't think that's allowed and um, but like I said, I'm, I'm hoping to hear back from my contacts and I'll let you know, but that, that was interesting, so they were just riding on the sidewalk?
It was very scary because I was sitting on my couch in the living room and the window faces Wilcrest and I saw, you know, an animal I thought was a dog and then when I looked more closely, it was this huge horse with a rider, of course, that was almost at my window, it was in my shrubbery area. And then I- And then I guess he had lost control maybe of the horse and got it out of that area and then went racing down the sidewalk, and so. You know, I mean, I didn't have enough time to get my keys and unlock the gate and go out there and say, hey. What are you doing? You know what I mean? It was just like, holy cow, what is this, the Wild Wild West?
Yeah.
So funny.
And horses are so big, you know, they're so magnificent creatures that, uh. You know, I'm thinking, he could have crashed into my window.
Horses are, are strong, strong animals and sometimes. Not for control, so I'm glad nothing happened there, but yeah, that, that was, when I got your email, I was like, wow. I could not imagine something like that, that was the first.
I'm like, is this legal?
Can you imagine the insurance claim on that? The insurance, the, the insurance report, what happened? A horse crashed into my house. It's funny, cause I told Sheri the same thing about the bicycles, that's the first thing that came to mind, I said, I said. I wonder if they have to abide like a bicycle where you're technically supposed to ride them in the street?
Yes. Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I read.
Before riding the horses, there's like two riders and two horses, I've seen this before, like here on Wilcrest. But I've never seen it come that close, but I've seen them on the sidewalks before. So I don't know who they are or where they come from, but I'm thinking. Where are these horses here in urban Wilcre- Wilcrest?
I wonder where the stables are, you know, where, where are they being kept?
Exactly, it's like, where in the world did they come from?
So odd, so odd, you better check, you better check someone's patio, there might be a horse back there.
Yeah.
My god.
We've gotten, we've gotten calls on roosters, uh, that would be a first, you know, there's a horse in the backyard.
A horse in your living room, yeah.
My parents live in New Braunfels.
Oh, nice.
We came home or we were leaving one night, and there, there was, there was like a wild rooster right at the doorstep. We're like, we can't leave, and we ended up calling the city and like a police officer came.
There was a what there?
Like a wild rooster.
Oh my gosh, a rooster?
So we're like, we didn't know what to do, but the police had him under arrest there. He wrangled him somehow, like, I don't think he put him in the car, but I guess he got him to shoo away, but.
Yeah, I, I have family in New Braunfels too, and my sister, she, um, in the, the rear of her property. Is, there's a, a snake farm, which is a snake farm and an animal zoo, so. I don't know if you, so whenever you're out there, like, um, I actually, I'm gonna go this weekend to go visit them, but you can hear howler monkeys. In the back, in the backyard, you can hear howler monkeys, you can hear, uh, lions roaring, so i- it's, it's. I'm just, it is a snake farm and, uh, you know, up to now, that there's never been any type of loose animal. But that's definitely a fear, cause it's right behind her property, it's a big ranch. But yeah, it's, um, it's interesting, you wake up and then you just hear howler monkeys, it's.
Oh my goodness.
Oh my gosh.
Have you been to that, that snake farm before?
Oh yeah, I've been, I've, I've gone there multiple times, you know, New Braunfels, it's, it's, it's a small town, that, that's our zoo essentially. So, yeah, I've been there multiple times and it's, it's, it's a lovely place, but yeah, it's, it's, sometimes, you know, you're sleeping and you hear a lion or. A howler monkey and they're very loud, so you're just like, oh yeah, I forgot.
Oh, I forgot where I am. That is too funny.
Wow.
Yeah, we went there, out of all places, my sister wanted to go there for her birthday a couple of years ago, she was like, let's go to the snake farm. It, it was, uh, it was better than I thought it was, I did, yeah.
Oh yeah, it's actually, I, I always, I thought it was gonna be like, eh, but it was nice, you know, and we, we took the little kids to the petting zoo, they had a blast there, so. Yeah, I can't complain.
Petting zoo, petting snakes?
No, 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 uh, uh, it's, it's called snake farm, but they have, you know, they have all types of animals. They have bison, lions, pumas, cougars, all peacocks. Wolves, they have a little bit of everything, but yeah, they, they do have a, a good, um, good amount of snakes and reptiles and lizards in there. But the petting zoo is, is strictly, uh, little goats, sheep, and they had a nice little cute baby cow, so. Yeah, no snakes, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pet the snakes, um, I love them, but not that much.
No.
Recommend it, wouldn't recommend it.
Well, at least we don't live in Florida where alligators and crocodiles come right up to your, you know, patio.
Oh gosh.
Yeah, those are my biggest fears.
Been out on the news, I mean, that would be scary, those are scary creatures.
Oh yeah, if you're walking and they, they could just pull you, like that, they do a little spin and, and you're gone. We actually have a lot here of alligators, I don't know if y'all been to, uh, what is it called? Uh, there's a, there's a national park here, it's a gator park, I, it's not coming to me. But, um, I, I went there and, yeah, never again.
First time and last time.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was something else, I did, um, I, yeah, no.
Yeah. Well, we have enough critters living in our town on community, you know, we have squirrels. And we have little geckos, little families, geckos. And we have families of opossums. And, and what else, Rolando, we have dogs and cats and all sorts of critters.
Oh yeah, of course.
Maybe some snakes too, but I don't know where they are. And, and we have little frogs, because when I take my dog out at night in the back, Rolando, and it's dark, and I take my flashlight. There's little frogs in the grass looking for food. They're so cute, oh my gosh.
I see them, I actually saw a, a random crawfish one day, I guess it escaped someone's kitchen and. I was like, did a, a double take, it was at night, and I just saw this little red crawling thing, I'm going, gosh, it's like a. Crawfish.
Crawfish, ew.
Unless it was one from the, from the ditch somewhere, but.
Yeah.
You, you could see a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, wildlife along those ditches, over there by India House. On West Belfer, we saw otters, uh, me and my girlfriend were walking down and. We saw otters, yeah, we, there was a little pack of them, and then we've also seen, um, what do they call it, uh, coyotes. Coyotes and otters, yeah, so we, we've seen those and that's, you know, smacked up. In, you know, West Belford, Beltway, it's, you know, it's kind of odd to see, but they use that as a channel to move up and down through the waterways. But yeah, we, uh, I was shocked to see, to see otters there, but the park that I was referring to is Brass's Bend. I'm sorry?
Uh, Brass's Bend, yeah.
Yeah, Brass's Bend, that's where they have a lot of alligators and I went there one time.
Remember growing up going there.
That was the last time.
That was definitely the last time, and then the, the thing is, uh, we left that night. So that was pretty scary, walking the trail, so it's a little trail, then on both sides is water. And there's gators, so you really can't see two feet ahead of you, or it was dark, and then once we get in the car. And you turn the lights on to the, so that your car, you just see thousands of mosquitoes just trying to get at, you could just see them in the window, just trying to get you.
Wow.
Attacked, uh, oh no.
Yeah, well, we've invaded their world, you know?
Coexist, good thing there's no dinosaurs around, huh? I've seen the, with the nutria, nutria. Seen them in Sugarland.
Isn't that an otter?
They're, well, they, they're kind of big, you might think that they look like that, they, they look like huge beavers, yeah.
I didn't know we had beavers here in Texas.
I don't think I've seen one, but.
Yeah, someone made a post, um, they went to Bucky's out in West Texas. And they were recording, and then they pan to this little lake and there's a beaver there, so I was like, oh, I didn't know that, so I guess we have beavers.
It's the real.
Wow, I did not know that.
Yeah, I didn't know we had beavers down here, that, that was pretty interesting.
Otters are really cute, I like little otters. They're playful, little animals.
Oh, we have the giant river otters at the Houston Zoo, they're like bigger, I mean, uh, yeah. They have a really nice exhibit, the, the penton, South America Pentanole exhibit, so you can see them there.
I haven't been to that, I haven't been to the zoo, but I definitely, I, I didn't know they had that exhibit, that's cool.
Oh, you need to, you need to go, cause they had, they opened like two big exhibits between like twenty twenty and, and then in April. They opened, uh, Galapagos Islands in April.
Oh nice.
That one's great, cause it's mostly indoor, believe it or not.
Oh wow, perfect, perfect with this hot climate, you know?
I know, the air conditioned and, so they did it, they did a really good job with that one, it's, it kind of feels like a mini aquarium, there's even penguins inside.
Oh nice.
So.
Definitely have to check that out, for sure.
Texas penguins. Or Galapagos penguins.
I hope they keep them cool, you know, cause it's a, a penguin in Texas, that's a high AC build, for sure.
I, that's what it's odd about the Galapagos, like I, I don't remember why, but like, you know, there's regions that are not too hot, you know? So, but they can handle that breed that they have. Penguins, they're able to handle more than the, their typical penguins as far as heat. So, uh, I don't know, they, they thrive there for some reason.
However, when they view this, they're gonna get a, a good lesson on, uh, animal kingdom.
I, yeah. Absolutely.
You know, but like I said, I, I really do hope that we can get this declassified for them, you know, like I said, even if the speed cushions aren't issue, stop sign, just. Anything that we could implement is better than, you know, what's currently there, which is nothing.
I assume thing, yeah, I mean, we're just extremely, it's amazing that. Y'all did what you were able to do, because like our options were little to nothing.
Yeah, we, uh, like I said, the, the council member, you know, he, uh, we, we wanted, you know, we wanted. The answer was no, so it's, hey, just, you know, give us something that, you know, could help. And that's where the rumble strips came in, and the council members were more than happy to fund it, cause he knows your story, he's, he's spoken with, with y'all, the residents out there and. You know, this, this was, uh, you know, this, this was something that was provided for us as an option, you know, weren't enough engineers, they decided, let's give it a shot, and we decided to do so. You know, it's, um, you know, it's not been the most impactful one, that's why we're, we're here, and, you know, we'll support y'all the entire, entirety of the way, so.
Yeah, it's like, well.
Well, guess what happens, guess what happened Saturday? I'm driving down Wilcrest, going toward Bissonnet, and I notice. A center point light pole, you know how big and tall they are, on the ground.
That's right, that happened last week.
On the ground, in front of nine two zero two Wilcrest. So you know, as well as I do, that that pole landed on the ground because somebody in a car hit it.
Yeah, or a truck or something.
Other way, there's, or a truck, what, yeah, a vehicle, hit that pole, actually took it out of the ground.
Yeah.
With such force, so I called three one one on Saturday to report it and they forwarded me to Center Point. And they were out on Monday repairing it, putting it back in place.
Wow.
I was shocked at Center Point's quick reaction, because usually it takes a long time for Center Point to do anything.
Yeah, that's pretty urgent.
Yeah, but that's just another example of people driving fast on Wilcrest and hitting. A light pole, for crying out loud.
I know, uprooted it.
Yes, uprooted the light pole, you saw it, right, Rolando?
I, I'm surprised you didn't hear anything when it happened, but I don't know when it happened, I just know it probably happened sometimes last week, you know?
Yeah, it happened sometime last week, I don't know what day it happened either, but Anne, Anne Baker actually told me about it. So when I went out Saturday in my car, I was specifically looking for, for the address so I could report it, and I'm like, holy cow, look at that.
And I remember, I was like. I remember this meeting was coming up and I'm like, oh, there you go.
There you go, there you go.
It's a good thing it didn't fall in a house.
It didn't fall in the street, it was on the ground and the sidewalk and the grass.
It just fell the right way.
Yeah, that's true, if, if it's the one I'm looking at, I'm, you know, there's a lot of places could have fallen that would not have been the most.
That little strip of grass and.
I see, I see that, no.
That would have been me or Cherry with our dog underneath.
Oh, you see it, you see it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking, you know, go, yeah.
In the house.
Wow, yeah.
That, that, that could have killed somebody if it had fallen in somebody's house.
I didn't get a picture, I don't think I got a picture of it, maybe I did. I, cause I remember, I was like, oh, that's part of the story.
Example of the, of the things that get hit around here because of these speeders. Speeders and people under the influence, you know, cause most of the people that hit our properties and things, they flee.
Yeah, yeah.
After, after the vehicle stops and they realize, I guess, you know, oh my god, I'm in trouble, they run away. You know, nobody stays and confronts the police or goes to jail or anything like that.
No, they know what's coming.
I guess, I guess. When you think about it, because you know that the car is probably registered to them, so. You know, how are they gonna really get away, you know what I mean? They just don't face the music at that moment.
Seems the only people I've ever been in an accident with, they don't have insurance, I'm like, oh my gosh, you're kidding? It's been a long time, but it's like, why is it only them? Just always seems to be. Always.
Now, did I tell you that we got our money from the second crash to the pool fence?
Really?
From the insurance company, that, they had triple A and we got, you know, for, for the damages that we incurred because of the crash. We got paid, we got paid for that, but not the first, not the first one, which was the most expensive one. Because that was very, you know, that was, the lady had loaned her car to the guy who crashed and he ran away and. They said she didn't have insurance and so we never got anything from that, the first one.
That's a miracle, we got something.
I know, it's a miracle we got anything, yeah, I was like so happy about that.
Because it's always one of these weird situations, right, we gotta run errars, it's somebody's car that's in the family and. It's like, why is it always that person?
Yeah, yeah.
Wow, well, that's good, that's good.
I know, I know, you know, something good for a change.
I know. One good thing.
You know, the pool, the pool is closed, right, close by the City of Houston Health Department?
I know, I, I don't know why, but. I didn't know exactly why, but yeah, I heard recently.
Well, there's several reasons, there's several, uh, reasons that he gave, one was the, the emergency phone there is not working properly. Uh, there's gaps, uh, uh, under the wrought iron fence that have to be corrected because of breaching. Um, signage, something about the signage, I'm not sure exactly about that, but just different things, you know? I prefer the pool to be closed, because, uh, ever since it opened, we've had nothing but loud music. For hours and hours, and I live right over by the pool, so it's very, uh, bad noise disturbance, it's very disrespectful. To the neighbors that live around the pool, so, you know, my feelings about the pool are not good feelings.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, so being closed is okay with me.
Okay with it for now.
But you know what, the, so the city inspector came out last Friday and that's when he closed the pool and he put a red sign. On the gate that people access, that says, pool closed until further notice, well, somebody removed that sign.
Oh, they're not supposed to do that, that's an offense.
Somebody tried to get in the pool and got mad, I guess, and just took the sign right off the gate.
That's an offense, it says right on the sign.
That's the people we have around here, I mean, it's just like, what the heck, man, it's a, leave the sign alone, you know?
I'm, I'm surprised we didn't get, had the violation when we didn't have a fence for so long, it was, I don't know.
Well, that's true, yeah, I don't, well, the pool wasn't open then, though, was it?
Uh, that's true, technically it was closed.
Yeah, it was closed, so I guess that's probably why.
Yeah, on a technicality.
You know, we are going to have a vote, um, at the July meeting, well, prior to the July meeting when the ballots and everything are mailed out. For the two positions about closing the pool. Voting, voting to close it or not to close it. So I don't know what your feelings are about it, but I already told you mine.
Oh, I vote yes, close it.
That's what I, yeah, because it'll save us money too. It'll save the association money to close it, cause I, I can't remember how much we pay the pool man. But, oh, that's another, you know, that's another, um, reason for closing the pool. He said that, the inspector said the pH level was not what it was supposed to be. Well, we pay the pool man to keep it correct and then, you know, we get a violation on that. Holy cow.
Oh, yeah, cause he's supposed to come every week, especially if it's open.
I don't know, I don't know when he comes, but you know, that would save us money on maintenance and repairs. We pay gates in motion too, so we, you know, if the pool was closed, we wouldn't have to pay gates in motion either.
I know it will cost money to close it, cause how to properly close the actual pool. But in the long run, we start saving money.
That's what I think. That's, that's my feelings too.
I felt like in the past, some of the board, they're just like, oh, we don't wanna spend the money. Like, we don't need to do that.
I know, I know.
But it's time.
But I, I agree with you. In the long run, it'll save us money.
Mm-hmm, mm, you'll probably take a hit up front and then, then you start to go forward.
Right now, we don't have any money anyway, cause of the damn insurance.
I know.
Holy cow.
Wiping us out.
I mean, for real.
Wiping us out. We'll have to ask David if he has any, any guidance from, I, I did think about contacting the like the Houston Housing Authority. And just, I'm just curious if that's, if they had any, any insight. Cause it just doesn't seem right. Like, we have laws to protect the association fees from getting out of control from obvious reasons, but insurance? No. I don't know. I'm like, it's gonna literally bankrupt us one day.
Well, exactly. It's not gonna be sustainable if it goes up every year at the significant rate that it has this last year.
Yeah, so it, just something didn't seem right. I feel like there's, there's probably something we don't know.
That's possible, I guess.
Smarter folks than us.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I, uh, yeah, I heard something about the, uh, Houston Housing. Yeah, send, send it, send that to me offline tomorrow. I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, just, um.
Inquire, see what's going on.
Start, yeah, that's the, that's the only people that popped into my head. I'm like, maybe they have some insight on this kind of situation, which is probably happening across many older communities. So, uh.
Yeah, maybe we could be reclassified as something other than what we are and maybe the insurance would come down.
Maybe.
You know, like maybe if it was a fifty five plus community or something, maybe the insurance would be lower. I don't know, but you'd have to move.
You'll have to adopt me. Oh my goodness. I know, we'll have to seek out these creatives. We'll have to seek out some creative solutions soon. Very soon. So are we supposed to go back to the main room, David?
I think it's, meeting's over.
No, you don't have to. Once it's seven o'clock, I'm just gonna go ahead and stop recording. And then you all are done for the evening. But I do wanna tell you, Rolando, that I do love your pictures. They're so clear and beautiful. I don't know, is it a camera phone? A cell phone?
Nice sunny day.
Yeah, well, what I'm gonna do is I'll keep those slides for you for the public, uh, hearing. And if you'd like, you could still use that same imagery, uh, to, you know, make your position before the planning commission. I think you've got some great images here and I'll of course be in contact with you to see if you wanna add anything else, but I think this is a good start.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, guess we did it.
It's seven P M. Thank you all for your time. Um, we'll get everything transcribed and we'll get everything put into the record and we appreciate your time this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Sheri. Thank you so much, Rolando. Ms. Linville, it was great hearing from you. And, uh, like I said, we appreciate our, uh, you know, everyone for stepping up and thank you for sharing us, for taking us by the head and guiding us. So we appreciate it. Thank you, man.
No worries. Anytime. Happy to help. We'll see you soon.
Y'all, take care and stay cool, cause it's hot.